Before we start our meeting, I've asked Commissioner Brown if he would lead us in this prayer at this time.
Let's pray. Yeah, my Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. Thank you that we can come here tonight, Lord, and thank you that we live in a country where we can seek you out freely in a format such as this, Lord. And we just thank you that you bless this county so much, Lord, and we just ask that you continue to bless it. Be with us tonight as we conduct county matters. Be with us. May your will be done through us, and may we do everything pleasing to you. We just ask this in the precious son's holy name. Amen.
Let's all stand for a place to pray. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you. We'll call the meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, May 23, 2023. We'll call this meeting to order. First on the agenda, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or whether you are watching by HTC Channel 3 or YouTube, Hart County Board of Commissioners. And we welcome you here tonight. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We've got some corrections we need to do.
We've got some deletions to make. So under 13A, the code of honor, I got an email saying that they're still working on some numbers on there, so we'll take it all off.
Okay.
And tax commissioner calls this morning to take her off of the agenda tonight.
Okay.
And we're also going to take off litigation under second session.
Okay.
Make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey. Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote out of favor. All right, we'll go over our minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? We'll go with the May 9, 2023, to start with.
I make a motion, we approve the 59 regular meeting minutes.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion?
I'm a transparency. You want me to stay in from voting. I've read through the meetings and I've watched bits and pieces, but I haven't just sat down and watched the full of our meeting. I can vote if you see it, but otherwise I'm staying from the vote just because of my absence.
That's your decision. You can insist. All right, we'll call for a vote out of favor. Okay, let's pass it over to him. All right, now the call meeting with the ABA. Any additions or corrections in those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the call meeting on the ABA.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote out of favor. Just by the way. Now we go to remarks by the votes committed to our authorities. Reports by constitutional law, our department has, we have Ms. Brandy Shiflett with the Hart County Extension Coordinator, 4H Youth Development Agent, and she's going to give us such updates tonight.
Yes, so we've been real busy over at the extension office. 4H is busy the entire school year. A lot of different things have been going on, but I thought tonight it might be fun to hear from the words of some of our students. So if Ms. Phoebe, if you'll come join me up here, and Mr. Easton, I'm going to let y'all give them a little overview of a couple of things y'all have been involved in.
Good evening. I'm Phoebe York, and I've been a part of all three judging teams for its offer. Judging teams are a competitive event that gives the opportunity for us to study about a specific topic for four to 12 weeks depending on the event. 4H offers forage judging, cotton bowl consumer judging, and poultry judging. In forage judging, we learned how to identify about 40 trees and how to identify 25 insects or bugs that affect trees, how to place a course, and how to estimate the salt沉重. In cotton bowl consumer judging, we learned to consume these skills and how to make wise decisions about various products. We learned about cotton, how to create a 30-second advertisement promoting cotton and juices. Productions and the products of the grain by the USDA. We also learned how to identify retail cuts of a chicken and how to judge production hands based on its past egg production. Both consumer judging and poultry judging, we learned how to give a detailed set of reasons to defend our answers from one consumer item and place the hands on its past egg production. Our forestry team placed first in the district, and our consumer and poultry judging teams both placed third in the district. Each team has team members that are recognized for the top five or better for their individual scores by the kids of the contest. I was first place in the forestry team, one of the top five. We learned a lot of things about these judging teams. My favorite has been forestry because I get to learn about bugs and insects. Thank you for joining.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Settle. What a topic I was interested in. I am doing research to write a three to six-minute speech. I also had to make posters to help everyone follow what I was talking about in my speech. I had to present my project in front of about 12 people from different counties around northeast Georgia and Georgia. I competed in the forestry, forestry project and talked about the yellow popper tree. I chose this topic because the yellow popper was a tree I had learned about in forestry judging. While I wasn't excited to speak in front of others, I found out that it wasn't that bad. I placed first in the project, and I'm looking forward to doing it again next year. Thank you.
So just a bit of highlights from our past year. We do go into the school system and meet with every fourth, fifth, and sixth straight student through the school year and teach various topics within the science realm. And then we offer several different opportunities for kids to explore skills through judging teams or project achievement, which is our public speaking competition. Easton and Phoebe were both at all of those events, and you can see some of the highlights through our numbers. We averaged about 10 students on every judging team that we offered. And like Phoebe said, they all placed, forestry was first in the district this past year, and cotton bowl and consumer and poultry both placed third this past year. And we had members on each team that excelled and were placed in the top five of all the kids competing at the competition. So that was great for them and very proud of them. Our middle school and high school students also can compete in these projects, and they went to project achievement as well. We're in a rebuilding cycle since COVID with that age group, and we were able to take 80 students, middle school and high school, on to project achievement this past year, and we have one moving on to state competition this summer. So we'll be taking this Lexi, we let's compete in the communications project. So right now in 4H, we are gearing up for camp. We have four different camps this summer going on. Cloverly Camp for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade will be at Wasiga 4H Center in the mountains. We've got some middle schoolers going to Wilderness Challenge Camp, also at Wasiga. We have a couple of high schoolers going to Senior Camp at Rocky Eagle, and then we have a handful of students going to Junior Camp at Fortson 4H Center in Atlanta this summer. So we are winding down a little bit, but also gearing up for our summer and just making some plans for next school year throughout this little bit of downtime. So that's kind of what's going on in the 4H realm. But I also wanted to bring Ms. Sierra Burke up here, our new ag agent. She's been with us officially six months now, and wanted to give her an opportunity just to tell you some of the things that she has been doing.
Good evening, everyone. We appreciate y'all letting us come down here and let y'all know what we've been doing down at 200 Arthur Street. As Brandy said, I've been here six months officially. I think it'll be seven in June, at the beginning of June, and in those seven months, I have absolutely hit the ground running, addressing issues as they come up and assessing needs in the community and building my programs around that. I would like to highlight a couple of items that you have in that document in front of you. So since the beginning of October, when I started, I have been reaching out to the community and providing information through monthly newspaper articles in the Hartwell Sun, which reached about 5,000 people in the county and the area. I've also begun a monthly radio appearance on WKLY, which reaches about 10,000 people in the Hart County area. I've also launched an e-newsletter that gives an extension update and highlights some things that 4H are doing, and also has some A&R related articles. Have about 30 people signed up for that. I'd like to have 50 by the end of the evaluation year in October. And I've also created a monthly social media series highlighting different things. So we've done weed ID, all about pecans, all about roses, and we do a weekly post within those series. Looking towards the summer, I'm going to do one on how to be outdoors in the summer, some tips for being outdoors in the summer, mosquito control, tick control, things like that. And I have contacted and presented educational programs for 10 local clubs and associations, which has totaled in about 285 contacts that way. Since I've been here, I have also planned and carried out two educational programs thus far. My first one was titled Backyard Flock 101, and I really wanted to educate the people on backyard chickens as well as good biosecurity practices to prevent the avian flu spreading to here in Hart County. Also carried out one named Wondering About Your Well Water to educate homeowners on troubleshooting issues with their well in addition to proper care of wells and well safety. And I have an extension information table at the Farmers Market Association once a month, which I just started that. They just started in May. That was really good to get out in the community and give information out and meet people that way. One of the things I'm really excited about is I have officially assembled my A&R Program Development Team, which is a team of people in the community that are going to help me build my programs, assess needs, kind of be my ears to the ground here in Hart County, and help me make contacts with other producers as well. A couple of things I'm currently working on, so I'm serving on the Ag Expo Planning Committee with other groups in the county, like the Chamber of Commerce and the Farm Bureau and the Board of Education, and that'll be on August 19th, so I want to see everybody there. It'll be a great, great day focused on ag. I'm currently working on and gathering farm gate values, and farm gate values for 2022 will illustrate the value that agriculture here has here in Hart County and how it impacts the overall economy in the state. In addition, I wanted to share that currently Hart County is the number one county in the state in water testing, so through different articles and talking with people and different programs, I have really increased the number of testing here. And we've already increased the amount of soil testing done by this time last year by 51%. And I also wanted to share a couple of big things coming. I have a pesticide training class, which private and commercial license holders can earn continuing education credits so that they can be re-certified. That's coming up on July 25th. And then I'm partnering with the Department of Agriculture to bring in egg handling certification course to Hart County, which is required by law for anyone to sell eggs. And that course is on June 8th, and we had all of the spots filled within two days, so that was pretty exciting. And then I'm also partnering with the Botanical Gardens here in Hart County to hold the Great Southeast Pollinator Census on August 18th. So just a couple of things. Got a lot of things in the works, a lot of big plans for the future. They've had to tell me to slow down, so. I know. Gosh, I remember in all this stuff, I have to pull my reports just to remember what all I've done. It's been a great six months. I'm really enjoying it here in Hart County. Love everyone I've met and having a really good time. So does anyone have any questions for me or for Brandy?
Sounds like you've been very, very busy.
Trying to be. I like to stay busy.
Appreciate what you guys do.
I do too, and I appreciate you around visiting farms and stuff like that.
Yes. Thank y'all for having us.
And I'd like to say, Mr. Shiflett, that, you know, you could stand up here and tell everything that y'all are doing, but that meant more to see those young people up here doing what they do. I mean, that's proven, so to speak, that your program's going good, your work. And I encourage you, as we've got kids in elementary school, get involved with 4H. I mean, get involved with these learning activities that can be useful throughout life. So I do appreciate y'all's programs.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
All right, we'll slow things down a little bit, Mr. Park Town.
Yes, just bubbling up. A couple of things. Just let people know, the transfer station is going to be closed down over this kind of weekend. That's a two-pronged thing. The construction companies have got to get a larger pipe across the road and sewer lines across the road, so while they're doing that, we're going to be doing some maintenance work on the building itself at the transfer station. I hated it to hit a weekend where everybody's off, but there's multiple contractors involved in it, and this was the only time they could get, all of them get in one time to do that. So that'd be Friday through Monday.
It actually starts Thursday, didn't it?
Uh, maybe I'll check the grid. I've got them all set up. Anyway, it takes a good hack, three, fours a day just to clean them, our park where they can actually do the work. And it's a National EMS Week, so if you see the guys and girls in the back, let them know you appreciate them. Commissioner Dorsey told me this morning that next month, first of next month, going to close Ridgeview Road down for a day or so to replace some railroad tracks. We'll get some BTRs and I's and all like that. It's going to be on Highway 17 in Ridgeview, Ridgeview Road. And this weekend, we've got cards and guitars up town and concert afterwards, so everybody come out and have a large time with it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. As far as Chairman's report, again, I'd like to express my thankfulness to our EMS here in Hart County. They are, to me, I believe they are one of the finest groups in Georgia, and it is National EMS Week, so if you see these guys out somewhere or whatever, don't get involved with their work in, okay? But if you just see them out at a restaurant or whatever, you know, tell them you appreciate them. They do a good job. They, they are a tremendous asset to this county. And I'd just like to say I appreciate them and I thank God for each one of them that served here in Hart County. I'm going to ask commissioners if they would to come down to the front this time. We've got some presentations to expect. Why is Mr. Davis, people come forward this time? He's been forward with the, with the. With appreciation, we hereby honor Sergeant Michael L. Davis for your dedication and your service to the Hart County jail facility, December 23rd, 2003, to May 8th, 2024.
Well, I'm young. I like to thank y'all for the sponsorship, fellowship, which I have lived in years, and also the discipline and the atmosphere of Hart County. I appreciate that so much. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Sergeant. Appreciate you.
Also, one whole. And then record it.
What is that, your order, Marshall?
I don't know how many people realize that when you become a commissioner, it's like asking you to do 66 hours of classes for county health. And we hereby recognize Commissioner Bennett tonight has completed his 66 hours. Commissioner Teasley has completed his some years back. Our colleague, Commissioner Frinell, working on his, Commissioner Dorsey, he was here before they did this all together. Bennett, that's your advice sometimes, I mean, they don't need to mind their part, but this is a state requirement that I think is a great contribution for Commissioner Bennett, and if he is here to give a little bit of focus here, I think that's why they tell us all to give these hours in, but we appreciate you. Thank you, and appreciate you. This, this class is so important. Most people don't realize that. Most people don't realize that I thank somebody on the commission, whether they are a county or another, and it's just a long 66 hours. The COVID did not, it's hard to get the class. I will thank this law, it was made for me. They were just great. They stayed on the phone, just buzzed them away, getting in there and partying there. It looked long, around two plus years, trying to do this. And the last thing I'd like to say is the commission on this board, you will learn from them just like you learn from a class, and you probably will learn more setting it asleep from the commission than you will from the classes. Anyway, it's a long road, and I hope the commission will exit the short road.
I'm fresh in the air. I'm ready to get started.
I wasn't expecting this, y'all. Yeah, I've made a comment that, you know, he learns some things for commissioners already in office, because those things are the right things. Sometimes in public view, they don't, might not seem that way, but anyway, but we do try to help each other out. That's one thing I'll say about this board. If there's something that I don't understand or something that may be going on, I can call any one of these guys and they'll help me along. And I know other commissioners feel the same about me, that I'm here available for any of them anytime, so we all try to lean on each other time to time, and I think that says a lot for our county government here in Hart County. All right, we'll move on. That's all I have. Chairman's report. We'll move on to District 1, Commissioner Bennett. The only thing I have is, the only thing I have is I got called a squeaky wheel last Friday by the state engineers. I had bugged them to death from my District 1 people that's asking for help in Newburg. We have a stop sign down there, so, well, they're going to do a traffic study on the Newburg area soon from now, so hopefully, we don't know how that'll turn out, but hopefully we'll get some good from it. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Teasley, District 2.
I'm like Commissioner Sayre, the rest of the commissioners up here. I appreciate everybody up on the public safety umbrella. I know we'll see you next week. I appreciate all them guys and women that work right there to keep our county safe. Appreciate the job that I will do, as well as all our county employees and admin staff. I know them have a difficult job from time to time and appreciate what they do. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Brown, District 4.
Yeah, it's a winter in the holiday weekend. I just ask everybody to be mindful of it and wish everybody a fun, safe, and happy Memorial Day, even, and remember what that day means and why we get to celebrate it for the sacrifices, the ultimate sacrifices we've made. And be mindful of our public safety, first responders during this time, because usually there's a lot of accidents during that time as well. And being EMS week, I just want to say my, you know, case for these guys, and we appreciate them. Obviously, we appreciate them more than just a week, and, but on this, we want to spotlight them and everything they do for us, and that's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
All right, District 2, Commissioner Dorsey.
I want to echo the same sentiments about EMS. We've had some struggles recently over the last few years. We've lost a lot of good people, and we've gotten good people now. We're going to get better and better with our EMS service, and if you see these folks, tell them you appreciate them, because they're really spending a lot of time away from their families or working a lot of overtime instead of 24, 48 on, and some of them are working 48 on, 24 off. So, I mean, it's, it's been a challenge for some of those positions, and it's not a field that a lot of people are going into now, and if you see them, tell them you really do appreciate them, and as everybody else said, we do appreciate them. I want to echo Terrell's comments. Ridgeview Road next 31st and possibly the first next week. I do have a contractor coming in. I'll be reworking that railroad crossing, so we will be putting up detours, so you don't know for sure. I've got work going on in Athens, so depending on how that goes, it could be the first before it hits. It's just all going to depend on how things go, but I just want to let everybody know that. And the last thing I want to talk about, we're getting closer and closer in the goldmine community to getting this bridge open back up, but the problem is we have had about eight roads that have suffered significant damage, one that's basically destroyed, a farm road. When Terrell and I met with the DOT back about, how long was it? February, what was it? You know, we pushed them to do a temporary bridge before they started. They said they weren't going to do it. Didn't have fun. weren't gonna do it, didn't have funds. Well, I can assure you that the damage that's been done to Hart County roads, Baker's Bridge Road, Baker's Road, um, Goldmine, always Springs Road, Allen and Goldmine, Redline Church Road, Beaver Dam Farm Road, Akins-Lunford Farm Road, Tom Rice Road, and Andrew Floyd Road, as well as Great Spanish Church Road. Because of all this big truck traffic that's gone on, nobody following the detours, uh, everybody relying on GPS, uh, we've got roads that are literally destroyed. Farm Road is, is, is basically, uh, destroyed. Um, we got two more bridges coming up in Hart County. One in Cooks Bay, down in the area, one in Shaw Creek.
Shaw Creek, Cokeberry Highway, and another Shaw Creek. Shaw Creek, Shaw Creek.
So, what I wanna do is, I want us to get back together, um, and if the board's okay, maybe Marshall and myself and Terrell, along with Alan Powell this time. I talked to Representative Powell today about getting involved in this, and let's try to head this thing off, because we don't need getting more roads torn up. And as far as I know, they're not doing replacement bridges or temporary bridges. There're gonna be detours.
Yeah, it's, it's all the paperwork got showing detours.
And the problem with that detour is everybody's not familiar with the area. They're gonna rely on GPS and they're gonna be wearing out these secondary roads. It's speak now or forever hold your peace unless you go in and get in the DOT's ear loud and let's be vocal and let's make sure we don't have a repeat of what we've had to deal with the past twelve weeks in Goldmine.
Yeah, and, uh, last week, I sent them some advice, I returned Powell to DOT requesting repair, extra repair money on the El Mig. That's all we can be finding through state. Uh, and I've gotta get an estimate of the damage on those roads and just back through to, to the, uh, the Atlanta office, uh, and then process to get an estimate of that. Now, whether it's gonna produce any funds or not, we don't know, but that's the next step, is to get, to get an estimate on all the damage.
And if we can't get anything with the DOT, I want us to be prepared. If we have to order signage, every road that surrounds this area, we need to close except for local traffic only, and put barricades up, stop some stuff happening. Uh, because if we don't, we're, we're, I mean, we're gonna face another situation that we got now. And we try our absolute best to get them to do a temporary bridge like was done in Danielsville, but absolutely refused.
Well, they're doing one on seventy-seven. That's the reason I understand they can't do the Shaw Creek and Cokeberry turns up and, you know, right along Newburgh. They're starting it and then they're gonna do a parallel bridge with it.
Well, they'll do one on that one.
Yeah, they're doing one there, because that was my first question, is when it comes out, you know, it's.
That may, that's changed, 'cause initially that wasn't.
Yeah, we met with them, that wasn't in the, in their plans.
That may have got some attention then.
Right, yeah. Uh, and at some point, uh, in twenty-five, I think the schedule is the second bridge on Ridgeview Highway is gonna be replaced.
Right.
Um, yeah, that, that's scheduled right now. Sometimes it's ordered a lot by twenty-five. That's gonna be another huge mess there, too.
And we've, we've already been basically through that when we had the situation with the, the, uh, road collapsed down, right before you get the new prospect, and we had all that traffic detoured around.
Car road, farm road, storm rage.
Which the state needs to take care of.
Right, yeah, the state went in and repaired that road.
Well, ER Snail, Valley Bridge, and Georgia Bridge has websites. If you, if you wanna see where they're working at or where their intentions is, you can go on there. That's what I've been doing.
You go to GDOT's website too and see what their plans are. And I'm gonna put that in the form of a motion that we try to get a meeting with the, uh, DOT and let's, let's get.
I agree.
Um, I definitely would like to see.
Yeah, I'll carry it myself and the Chairman, Sir.
Can do these, uh, parallel bridges, and if not, yeah, I'm completely agreeant with that. I mean.
That will not be good for Cokeberries or Shaw Creek. The detours, I'm thinking that they'll probably use it.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey.
Thank you, Second.
You got a second? And Commissioner Brown's second. Is there any discussion? If not, we call for a vote on favor.
It's five of eight. The last thing I, I did wanna mention is, uh, Hart County Little League is hosting, uh, All-Star Tournament for District Seven. Uh, kids out here playing baseball, if you've got some spare time on your hands, you can go down there and check them out. Uh, the recreation staff's done a great job in getting fields ready to play, and actually played last night despite all the rain we had yesterday afternoon, so kudos to Gemma's staff and to the local Little League Board. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, under all business, twelve A, bid opening football cheerleading uniforms.
Uh, we've got twelve bids and they, and they all, some of them combined, uniforms for the football, they had cheerleaders, so we could open them all on that.
Yeah, I promise.
And we got one.
I'll give it one.
Give it one.
You got a bunch of that. Got a motion from Sportography, um, Lawrence, Georgia, uh, Package A, twenty-four dollars, Package B, twenty-three dollars, Package C, nineteen dollars, Package D, nine dollars, and, uh, thirty-eight percent net donation. Turn around time for deliveries, two and a half weeks. It's just photography. Yes, that's all it's in there.
Right here's, uh, uh, BS. BSM Sports, and it says, uh, flag football jerseys, youth size twenty-five, adults twenty-five. It's got, uh, uh, football jersey, sixty-three point seventy-five, youth size, and adult sixty-four. Let's see, the football pants, youth size fifty-four point seventy-five, and adults, uh, fifty-five. And, uh, that's it.
I've got, I've got a rental here. Rental has foot, black football jerseys, youth size thirty-four fifty, adult size thirty-four fifty. Football jerseys, youth size sixty-seven dollars, adult size seventy dollars. Football pants, youth size seventy-nine dollars, adult size eighty-two dollars.
We got one from TSC, uh, Team Sports LLC out of Athens, Georgia, for the cheerleading, for the, let's see here, for the shell, is twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents for youth, twenty-nine dollars and one cent for the adult. Um, skirt seventeen dollars seventy-eight cents for youth size, adult size is eighteen, eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents for the football. Flag football jerseys, youth size nineteen dollars, jerseys forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Adult size is fifty dollars and forty-two cents. And the pants, the pants are twenty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Adult is the exact same on the pants.
Got a bid from Karoo Sports, um, cheerleading uniforms, shell for youth, twenty-nine dollars, adult, adult thirty-one. Skirt for youth, twenty-seven dollars, adult twenty-eight. Pom poms, twenty-two dollars a set. Um, and then also have a bid for, from Karoo Sports, um, um, football, flag football uniforms, uh, football pants, youth size twenty-eight dollars, adult size thirty dollars. Uh, branding, that's Champ Pro. Um, flag football jerseys, the brand name is Sport Tech, youth size sixteen, adult size eighteen. Um, football jerseys, Champ Pro Sports, youth size sixty-two dollars, adult size sixty-two dollars. And that's all.
Okay, I've got, uh, Go Sports, um, flag football jerseys, youth size fifteen dollars, adult size fifteen dollars. Uh, football jerseys, youth size thirty-five dollars, adult size thirty-five dollars. Uh, football pants, youth size thirty dollars, adult size is thirty dollars. And, uh, it does have an note here, one time setup charge of seventy-five dollars. Uh, nothing on cheerleading. Uh, here's another bid from, uh, for cheerleading uniforms. Uh, youth size, shell twenty-one eighty, adult size twenty-one, twenty-two forty-five. Uh, skirt, youth size sixteen ninety-eight, adult size seventeen sixty-five. Poms, seventeen dollars. And this is from Gabison Sports Center. All right, and then we have flag football Champ Pro, youth size eleven eighty-five, adult size twelve thirty-five. Football jerseys, Champ Pro, forty-nine thirty, adult size fifty twenty-five. And then football pants, youth size fifty-four eighty-nine, adult size fifty-six fifty. Is that all the bid? We only had one photography bid, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, the rest of them's been football and cheerleading uniforms. We have a motion to turn these over to county administrator and recognizer.
Make a motion, we'll turn this over to Terrell and the recognizer board.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on favor. It's five of eight. All right, the next thing, uh, is on agenda is thirteen C, Hart County Water Authority Splosh Discussion. And I had reached out to our director and asked, you know, if he just wanted to meet with us or if his board would like to be involved, and, and he goes and meets with his board, and their board, uh, wants to be involved with our discussion on splosh. So, uh, as far as the format of discussion tonight, it's just setting up a date and time when we can, uh, all meet together. Uh, I've, you know, uh, is May the eleventh good with everybody?
I'll be here.
Okay.
We can't do it after one of our meetings.
May eleventh, pal.
Huh?
I definitely will be here May eleventh.
I mean, I'm sorry, June, June the eighth is for, let's go, let's go to another month here, okay?
We don't have that meeting, Jim.
Hey, I don't, me and Terrell done been to Miami and back.
You jet person, I mean, you dizzy too.
Yeah.
Watch this out, everybody.
June eleventh.
Do you all remember what day we were meeting with the cities?
The twentieth.
Could we work it in before or after that one?
That one's at five-thirty. Uh, that's fine with me.
I mean, that, that would put everybody here at one time. I mean, if you don't do that one. Is that okay with y'all's route path?
Just have a. And that would be a regular scheduled meeting as well, so y'all would meet with the city.
Meet the cities and let the water authority follow.
Yeah, that'd be, that's fine. If that's agreeable with everybody.
Why come we can't have one, one at one meeting and one at the next meeting?
Talking about on.
One hundred second, one at four.
I don't know that they really need to meet on a lot of, 'cause nothing's really gonna change. I mean, amounts are gonna be about what we've done in the past.
Well.
If somebody picks up something, somebody's gotta lose something.
Correct. And again, I gotta go back kinda with the, the meeting and with the cities and, and everybody involved, kinda flow it together in case there's a change, in case there's a change on the city stuff. I don't know if there are or not.
Still doing both on June twenty, one at five-thirty, and others follow.
Well, if we got a meeting on the sixth, too, you might just wanna throw a tentative out there, the way you split them up.
That's what I'm saying.
Split them up.
Yeah, if we got a regular meeting on the sixth, and you guys wanting to do it on a meeting day.
No, we don't have it.
We got a meeting on the thirteenth and twenty-seventh.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Okay, you were saying, I thought you said we had a.
Well, we gotta, we gotta get back on our subdivision ordinance, too. I mean, we do that after.
And you got budget, too.
Yeah. So, I'm good with the twenty.
I mean, I just wanted that to, 'cause y'all are.
And like I said, if you don't, if, you're not obligated to be here, but if you wanna participate, be here. I mean, that's basically what it is, and, uh, same with the water authority. Say you wanna figure on that one at seven o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, or it can be early, just follow whenever that one, we get through.
Okay, why don't we meet with, with the water authority at five o'clock? Would that be, would that be?
That'd be better, to me.
Okay.
That'd be a push. You can go on schedule, I may have to call you, but.
Okay, all right. Let's, let's say five o'clock, Pat, on, uh, June, June the twentieth, okay? All right, uh, now we come to the part of public comment. Uh, we will remind you, if there's anyone here with a public comment, that we're not here to single out any commissioner. You address the chair and we respond back collectively as a board of commissioners. So, uh, if there's anyone understanding those rules, would like to have public comment this time. Yes, ma'am.
How's it going?
Yes.
The road ain't washed away already, is it?
No, no.
Has been a lot of rain.
Yes, it has. Um, so, I'm Nancy Evans. I'm here again about Heath Cove, Heathwood Circle, and Ren Road. Um, originally, you brought two loads of gravel, and then an additional load was brought. Um, I was told by Mr. Teasley that, not you, but the road man, um, that the dust would settle down. It has not settled down at all. It's as bad as it ever was. So, I called Heidelberg Materials, who has the contract with Hart County. I talked with a lady by the name of Kim, and she said, recently, the only thing Hart County's been buying from them is crusher run, which is a lot of sand. Um, she said, she suggested we try fifty-seven stone, which she says is about the size of the end of your thumb. Um, she said it rides like Millings, it's not as dusty. So, I'm asking if we can at least get a load of it to see if that's what we did have at the top of the hill that was not dusty, um, to see.
You wanna stay on the road?
I, I don't know, but I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to be solution oriented here.
It's small, tires hitting, flies everywhere.
So, I, I don't know. I was just trying to come up with a solution. Um, I think there's a little bit bigger stone that might be a sixty-seven stone. Um, but I do know that she said their fifty-seven stone is not the same as a lot of the quarries around. Now, what that means, I don't know. I tried to go up there to actually see it, but she.
A little bit bigger quarter.
So, um, anyway, so I just, that's my question, so.
Okay.
So, um, secondly, you know, we're not gonna give up about not trying to get on the El Mig. I, I see that that's not gonna happen immediately. Um, I think we've established that we can do, I mean, two of the roads of three are already sixty-foot rightaways, no question. Less than two tenths of a mile is a forty-foot rightaway. There's a lot, I have a list of every road in Hart County that, whether it be no matter the rights of way, um, there are lots and lots of roads that have less than twenty feet of pavement. Lots and lots, so you've set a precedent there. So, I'm just asking that there's consideration done. We've shown that the state would approve with a waiver for y'all to at least tar and gravel it. Uh, and so I think we've established that's all possible, so I'm just asking that we can get on the list at some point in time, and a commitment from y'all that we will get on the list. I don't, I know it's not gonna happen immediately, there's too much stuff going on, but.
We, our paving that we plan to do for El Mig resurfacing this year, we got about fifty percent of it.
I understand.
That's a two-year period. We've got roads that if we don't get in District Five, they're literally coming apart. I challenge you, go look at these roads. Go look at farm roads and you'll see what we're up against. And if they don't do something about these other detours, there, there's not money to do first-time paving, what we call first-time paving. There is not money to do it. I'm just being totally honest with you. We've been very transparent with you, and I hate to be the bad guy to tell you that, but that's the case. I mean, farm road is probably, it's gonna take a lot more than just resurfacing to put it back. put it back. You got one lane that's completely gone.
Part of Farm Road, according to this, isn't twenty feet wide, and some of it's even, even dirt.
No, it's not.
At least it's got a D on here, I haven't written it, but I'll be happy to go right.
It's not.
Anyway, same, same thing, but I'm just saying, I'm just asking for help. We've got twenty-two houses. My other thing is, I would hope that y'all would do the right thing if you ever do go to resurface roads, that you do not surface a forty-foot rightaway road without giving us consideration first, because they're just resurfacing, we are first time. So, we're in a worse shape than they are. So, that's all, I'm asking us to do the right thing here.
Back to that fifty-seven stone, you've got rocks in your tires before you hear them sling out.
Sure.
That's your fifty-seven stone.
I don't know, this is just what she told me, and she works at the quarry, so I, I'm not, I'm not an expert, so I'm just going by what she told me.
I was just trying to give you some idea of what you'd be dealing with.
Yeah, but she, she just said they rode like millings, and that's what most people are putting on their driveways and, and roads.
It's fine on driveway.
Yeah, so, anyway, okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have anyone else for public comment?
I do want my, one to announce, but, okay. We've got Chambers, Cars and Guitars, Saturday.
Oh, yeah, you got anything to say?
Um, no, but if you would like to come out.
You need to address the chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to announce.
He called me out. I know, he called me out, I'm like, don't say, I'm one of those, like, don't say my name. Um, yes, Sixteenth Annual Cars and Guitars this weekend, it looks to be bigger than ever, we have lots of vendors, lots of cars, it's going to be a beautiful weekend, so if you're out and about Saturday morning, please come out. Then we have our Downtown Music Festival, starting at one, I believe at Common Ground, and then Downtown Cafe and Southern Heart Brewery are also hosting bands that day. And then I've also got to give a plug to the Hartwell Lakeside Music Festival, that is going to be going on Sunday, I believe, at the Lakeside Resort, and those tickets can be found on their website. So, it's going to be a great weekend in Hart County.
That's from four to ten, I think.
I think so.
Sunday.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Yeah, lots, lots to do this weekend.
Yeah, all right. Anyone else?
I'm making a motion, the way adjourned.
Second. We got a motion, Commissioner Brown to adjourn and second from Mr. Bennett, all in favor? It's five of a vote, we always agree on that one.